Good morning. At this time, we'll call to order the Board of County Commissioners for the purpose of agenda review for next week's business session. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Commissioner Shafers here. Commissioner Allen?
Here.
Commissioner Cluck is absent. Commissioner Osterhaus?
Here.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
And Chairman Iler?
Here. We do have a quorum. Would the clerk please read the proposed consent agenda item?
Item number one, resolution number 096-17, consider annual approval and revisions of the investment policy for Johnson County.
Yes. Mr. Fransen.
Good morning. Tom Fransen with Treasury and Financial Management. The item before you today is usually a housekeeping item where we have you approve the annual investment review policy. And the reason we do that is because, as mandated by the Pool Money Investment Board, they require you to approve the policy each year so we can receive our expanded powers, abilities, under state statute. A little bit of a wrinkle this year, we actually are making a change to the policy, and I wanted to briefly talk about that. As outlined in the briefing sheet, we're proposing one change that changes the number of days that we can hold bond proceeds that we receive in one of three different funds as listed in the briefing sheet. And the change we're making is from five days to 30 days. And the rationale behind that, as we discussed it with the Investment Review Committee, was allowing us some flexibility to be able to go ahead and place those funds from an investment strategy rather than let them sitting in the investments as mentioned there. So knowing that really just allows us more flexibility to go ahead and make investment decisions. And the primary reason for that is because of the upcoming bond issuances we plan on doing, namely for both the courthouse and for the tomahawk treatment facility. And unless there's any questions, there's another item I would like to mention, but I would stop here and-
Other items? Significant items?
There's one of note that I'd like to mention that we've been working on when the Investment Review Committee, which is actually unrelated to the action we're asking for here, but I did want to talk about that briefly.
Well, is this part of your report?
Yes, it is. Actually, the second item I'm referring to is some work that the committee has done recently along the lines of trying to continuously improve as well as provide more transparency and under the direction of Commissioner Ashcraft as chairman of this committee. We've taken a look at some of the measurements that we monitor on a quarterly basis and trying to make more transparent view of what we do on this committee. We have crafted an item that's in your packet there, and it shows five different measurements that we have with regard to the Investment Review Committee. And those measurements are preservation of capital, security of funds, diversification of investments, maintaining sufficient liquidity, and maximizing our return on investment. We've pulled those five metrics together and put them in one sheet, which we call the Investment Policy Objective Summary, and will be reporting out to the Investment Committee on a quarterly basis. And then after that report out, we'll be posting that information to our website so the community can see how we are performing against the objectives from the policy statement.
Okay. Questions? Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Fransen, thank you for bringing this forward. The objective summary, will you also be sharing this periodically with the Board of County Commissioners, or will we just have to go on the website that Commissioner Brown likes so much in trying to identify? I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
We could handle that in any number of ways. Staff plans on posting that to the website. If the board would like that presented to them, options might be the manager's memo or we could send that directly on a quarterly basis to the board. It's-
We could attach in our weekly manager's memo. That'd be fine.
Well, the only reason I ask is we also reviewed the procedures that have been used by staff, and there had been a longstanding procedure to do a monthly report. And staff has, through the Investment Review Board, suggested that monthly, well, we weren't doing it to start with, but if we did do it, it might be a little bit too much information and not particularly value-added. So I would encourage staff to have some kind of reporting. Annually is fine with me, as you do your annual, but whatever might be appropriate, I think that makes sense. So the one question I had about the summary objectives, and this mirrors the performance metrics that have been longstanding with the board, so not really anything new there, but it's kind of a summary, and I commend staff for bringing that all together. The one particular question I had, though, had to do with liquidity. And right now, we have that measure, it stands, liquidity stands at 52%, but the target's only 25%. So will we be reducing that liquidity threshold from the 50s down to 25, or what's the expectation there?
So the expectation is we will continue our strategy, which, based on interest rates, is something that our cash manager looks at and decides how far out on the yield curve he wants to invest to go ahead and make sure we have maintained liquidity, meet our operating needs, as well as maximizing return on investment. I would anticipate that number might decrease slightly as we continue to evolve into a rising-rate environment, but I would not see us getting down significantly lower or closer to that 25%.
Okay. Well, so what's the thought process of making it 25% rather than what your targeted expectation is?
25% was a number agreed upon by the Investment Review Committee for two primary reasons. One, the cash flow associated with how the county's revenues come into the organization. We feel that that is a minimum because the cash flows actually are very closely aligned with our expenditure base. The other thought process was, from an investment standpoint, aligning with our reserve policy, where the county targets roughly 25% or more. We thought that made sense to also have that as kind of a floor or threshold for the liquidity side.
Okay. Thank you. Well, there is another reason, I think, in my judgment, for that high level of liquidity in that for the last many years, we've been in a low-interest rate environment. And the prospect now is that those interest rates will go higher. So if you're locked into an ill-liquid investment over a period of time with rising interest rates, the value of that investment declines. And so I would encourage you to stay with that very high liquidity standard in the face of the rising interest rates that are likely to occur. So, good job. And I would second what Mr. Ashcraft said. You know, the listing of the items, I think, were important, but those have always been part of the consideration of the Investment Review Group. So, yes, Mr. Ashcraft.
Well, Mr. Chairman, to follow on what you just said, I tend to agree with you in terms of liquidity being closer to 50%. You have much more expertise. I mean, that makes sense. I just wonder why we would then list as a target something as low as 25. That-
Well, if we-
I think we would have a lot of more sensitivity if it got down much below 50%. And I would think that would make sense then to highlight that and make sure it's brought to our attention long before it got anywhere near that.
Well, there has to be flexibility in regards to what happens in the marketplace. And so I, you know, I would be comfortable with the fact that the Investment Review Committee recognizes potential changes in the marketplace and are in a position to address those changes, quite frankly. Years ago, in the investment business, Puerto Rican municipal bonds used to be the thing you wanted to own.
Not today.
Not today. So I mention that simply because markets do change. But you want to continue this on consent or action?
Consent.
All right. Consent. Thank you, Tom. Next item.
Item number two, consider approving the October 26, 2017 business session minutes.
Okay. Mr. Brown was absent. That will remain on action. Next item.
Item number three, consider approving the 2018 audit plan proposed by the county auditor.
Lieutenant Cleftner?
Thank you. Chairman Iler, Commissioners, good morning. Ken Cleftner from Audit Services. This morning, I will be discussing the audit plan for 2018 that I will propose next Thursday and seek your approval. Before I discuss the audits and the activities for 2018, I want to share with you the activities and the projects that we've worked on under our current audit plan that was approved by this board in April of last year. The audits appearing under the planned audit section are the audits approved by the board in April, and we completed the countywide review of the purchase card use and the Johnson County Airport Commission transition audit. A third audit, the MEDAC transition audit, is currently in progress. We have not started the human services and developmental supports audits, and the transition audit of emergency management and communications was terminated, and I'll speak to that point in just a moment. Moving to the unplanned audit section, in December 2016, Sheriff Hayden requested we perform a transition audit of the sheriff's office. We initiated this review in February and completed it in September of this year. I must say that that significantly impacted our plan that was approved by the board. This transition audit generated two spinoff reviews: cash handling, accounts receivable, and the inmate welfare fund. These activities were, quite frankly, simply too big to cover in a typical transition audit, so I recommended to Sheriff Hayden, and he approved my recommendation, that those activities be a separate audit. Also of note, we were recently asked to review the coroner's office. As you know, the coroner's office currently reports to the sheriff's office, and on January 1st of 2018, it will be realigned to the Department of Health and Environment. We have expanded the scope of the performance audit in the sheriff's office, which is number nine on this list, to review the coroner's operations from a transition audit perspective. In addition, Sheriff Hayden requested we perform a staffing analysis. Currently, we are performing a staffing analysis in detention, operations, and judicial services as a staff-requested review. We started the transition audit in emergency management and communications in April of 2016, and shortly after that effort began, we suspended work for 16 months, allowing us to focus on other higher priority audits. I discussed the merits of returning back to emergency management and communications with management, and there was a consensus of opinion that audit resources could be directed towards a more value-added initiative. As a consequence, I terminated that audit and started our review of MEDAC. In the other professional services category, towards the bottom of that table, I typically set aside a number of hours to assist staff in what I refer to as consulting services. Our audit follow-up program is included in this category as well. Last year, some of these hours were expended to support our first peer review. We completed two staff-requested services, and as previously noted, we are performing a staffing analysis in the sheriff's office. I have identified the tentative timeframe to report on, to report out, excuse me, the three initiatives currently in progress at the bottom of the page. I believe this one-pager is a good representation and accountability of the activities and projects we worked on during the last 18 months. And I'll pause for just a moment before I proceed for any questions.
Oh, other questions?
On that. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Cleftner, you may touch upon this, but a couple of points. Mr. Chairman, as you know, we had an audit committee meeting, was that two weeks ago? Recently.
Yes.
And I appreciate Mr. Cleftner visiting with us. You may talk about this, but I want to make sure it's mentioned. One thing that Mr. Cleftner and his staff have done, have tried to develop performance measures for their operation using a balanced scorecard approach, and it was definitely a good effort, so I thank you for doing that and leading the way on that. It makes a lot of sense, and I'm sure those measures will evolve and mature as they were as we go forward. But thank you for outlining that. That's a very good construct. I want to also make mention that one of the things we discussed is the action of the auditor to terminate an audit that was approved by the commission itself. When the commission acts on and approves a plan like that, from my perspective, the commission owns that, so as we go forward, and I think the auditor agreed, the communication link in terms of making a decision like that will be modified to reflect that. I don't have any objections to ending that audit, but it's kind of a process issue. So I appreciate his consideration on that. And finally, Mr. Cleftner, I want to point out while you and your staff do good work, fundamentally, internal control responsibilities are not yours. That belongs to management, and I think the manager understands that. You are a reporting mechanism, kind of, you're the check and the check and balance, and I appreciate that. But I don't want you to feel as if you have to be responsible for internal controls. That is a responsibility of management, or at least that's how I look at it. So go on, you're doing great work, so I'll stop there.
All right. Continue, please.
Okay. While Linda's pulling up the letter that actually depicts the five audits that I'm proposing, let me give you some background. Board Resolution Number 080-94, which is the Internal Audit Charter, requires I follow a process that allocates audit resources based upon assessing risk within the county and focusing efforts on high-value audits. The audit plan I am proposing, or will propose next week, rather, accomplishes those objectives, and it considers five factors. It considers the results from our recently updated risk assessment. It also considers the county manager's concerns and priorities. I met with Honus and his team in early October to discuss the plan. It reflects those county departments and agencies that have recently experienced a change in leadership. It also considers the length of time that a county department or agency has been audited. And finally, the audit committee did meet on October 19th, and the proposed plan met with their approval. So let's talk about the five audits. First, a countywide review of cybersecurity and disaster recovery planning. The objective will be to evaluate the controls established to reduce the risk of data loss and corruption to the county's information systems. It will also include an evaluation of the county's planning and recovery efforts associated with restoring critical systems to an acceptable level in the event of a natural or man-made disaster. The second audit, a countywide review of physical security management and employee safety measures. This review would focus on the county's efforts addressing the protection and physical security of county buildings and facilities, and also the efforts addressing employee and patron safety at county offices, facilities, and activities. Third, human services. This is a carryover from our current audit. There are three human services programs: housing, community-based aging services, outreach, administrative services, and community development. Those three programs were rated high on the recently update to our risk assessment. The audit would focus on those three programs. I should also note that Audit Services has never audited human services. Next, I'm proposing a transition audit of the Department of Corrections to advise the future director of any issues needing to be addressed as a result of a change in leadership. I should also note that the Juvenile Detention Center program within Department of Corrections was rated high on the recent risk assessment, so we would focus on that area as well. Next, the audit plan includes a review of contract management activities and practices. This review will focus on post-award contract management activities and practices existing both centrally and at the department and agency level. And finally, I'm requesting approval to continue our audit follow-up program and to continue performing those staff-requested advisory services. And before I close, I just want to note, the proposed plan is a challenge. It will be a challenge in a couple of areas. But having said that, it reflects the priorities and the concerns of county leadership and the audit committee, so I believe it's worth putting forward, and it's the right plan to propose. So I'll stand for any questions you might have.
Questions? Lieutenant Osterhaus?
Ken, you believe, based on your comment you made just a few seconds ago, that you're adequately staffed to accomplish all the work that you put forward? Because I know we've talked about that from the beginning before about our-
Going into 2018, we'll be the, I'll have a full complement of the staff, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Action? Continue?
Consent.
Consent is okay?
Consent.
All right. So noted. Next item.
Item number four, conduct, excuse me, conduct a public hearing and consider approving the proposed streamlined Public Housing Authority annual plan for the period covering FY 2018 for submission to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Jess Moffel of Johnson County Housing Services. Section 5 of the U.S. Housing Act of 1937 established five-year and annual public housing authority PHA plans to provide a source for interested parties to locate policies, rules, and requirements concerning PHA operations, programs, and services. These five-year and annual plans identify the PHA's missions, strategies for serving the needs of the low and very low-income families in our jurisdiction. Johnson County Housing Authority's jurisdiction includes the entire county except that portion located within the city limits of Olathe. As required by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, a public notice was posted in the Kansas City Star on Saturday, September 30th, 2017, announcing a 45-day public review and comment period from October 1st, 2017 through November 15th, 2017. A public hearing is to be held on November 16th, 2017. Johnson County Housing Authority activities are consistent with the Board of County Commissioners' strategic priority number five: advance the self-sufficiency of vulnerable populations. The Housing Choice Voucher Program serves to maximize resources, to the extent allowed by HUD, for those members of our community who are housing insecure. Johnson County Housing Authority, the Johnson County Housing Authority has 1,447 authorized vouchers. This number is fixed by HUD and is not expected to increase. Of these 1,447 households, 51% have a disabled household member and 19% have an elderly household member. The average household income is $1,014,052. HUD has authorized up to 35 of these vouchers for its Family Self-Sufficiency, FSS, program, which provides case management, enabling participants to improve their economic circumstances and reduce their dependence on public assistance. A total of 3,082 persons are served by the Johnson County Housing Authority's Housing Choice Voucher Program. 43% or 1,325 are children under the age of 17. Over 99% of all housing assistant payments under this program are returned to the private for-profit sector. There are 247 active landlords on our Housing Choice Voucher Program, 245 of which are for-profit. Housing assistance payments or direct rental assistance approximates $9.6 million per year. No changes were made to our annual, to our proposed streamlined annual plan for 2018. Resident Advisory Committee, FSS, participants, and Housing and Community Development Advisory Committee, B OCC, appointees were consulted and invited to provide comments about our proposed annual streamlined plan. No objections or comments were received from either of these committees, nor have any public comments been made to date.
Okay. Well, this does require a public hearing, so we will remain on action unless there are questions. Lieutenant Allen?
Mr. Ward, I just have one general question. There's 3,782 people on the voucher program.
3,082.
Okay. I'm sorry. And then that actually has replaced Section 8 housing?
Yes.
Okay. So that's how many we have across the county. I know with all the apartment constructions, I've had a few people ask me, and I said, "Section 8 housing has went away. There's a program, you can actually go to any apartment complex."
As long as the apartment complex is willing to accept a voucher.
Accept it. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Moffel, is this your first time before us?
Yes, sir.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Glad you could be here. Appreciate your presentation. This is the streamlined annual plan?
Correct.
Is that something new, or do we always, have we always had the streamlined annual plan?
We have a five-year annual, or a five-year consolidated plan and an annual streamlined plan.
Okay. I'm familiar with the consolidated plan, but I just, I'm trying to figure out how this fits into that. So to kind of a follow-on to what Commissioner Allen was asking, you talk about what coverage this will provide. Do we have statistics or comparisons in terms of how many poor people living in poverty in Johnson County could be covered and what the gap is? Is the gap, are we shrinking that gap? Is it staying about the same over time, or has it been increasing? Is that in this report? I just didn't see that. And how effective we are at getting to that core issue. Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, I don't know. I'd have to defer to staff whether we've got that, but excellent question to see where you're going with that. If we don't have that, we'll see if we can come up with that number. I'd be interested in that as well.
Okay. Because we, I think, two weeks ago, or was it last week, we had some, I'll call it, surprise funding from the federal government, and I didn't know if this was going to be the driver for the use of those funds, because there were several options potentially. And then there's a whole component on homelessness, which I think kind of dovetails into the-
Yeah, if I recall, you're referring to the additional funds that we were awarded by HUD, and that was specifically for homelessness in Johnson County.
Well, again, one would assume with population increase, those numbers go up, but it would be good data to have, see what that correlation is.
Maybe by next week.
Did you need something, Debbie?
There's a UCS study that we addressed in the briefing sheet. There's 34,000 Johnson County residents living in poverty.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
That's not necessarily the needs of work, but that's okay.
Well, again, this is a public hearing required, so we'll remain on action. I am going to make an adjustment. Number five, the next one involves our state legislative program. We have four or five zoning issues after that, so I'm going to ask that we take care of those or maybe interested parties present for those items. So we will come back to item number five. Item number six.
Resolution Number 095-17 and application number NWCU3351, consider a request from Andrew Belt, applicant landowner, for a conditional use permit for an oversized accessory structure located at 12700 Spoon Creek Road on five acres, zoned RLD residential low-density district.
Ms. Wicklund.
Good morning. This is a request for an oversized accessory structure located near 127th and Spoon Creek Road, as you can see here on the vicinity map. The applicant is requesting to construct a new, approximate 3,900-square-foot detached accessory structure, which includes a 40-by-50 enclosed structure and then about 1,900 square-feet of open-walled lean-to area on three sides of the new structure. In this case, the enclosed structure part, the 40-by-50, does not exceed the square footage allowed on this five-acre parcel. However, it's the, these open-walled lean-to areas that exceed the allowance and is what requires the need for the conditional use permit. Here's just a quick aerial view of the property. You can see the house. There was an existing garage on there that's actually been demolished, and that'll be the new location of the new structure. And just quickly, this is what the, what the building will look like, and you can see those lean-to areas that I'm referring to there. Both planning staff and zoning board are recommending approval with stipulations in a 10-year term. Reasons are listed in the summary sheet and resolution. If you have questions, I can answer them.
Well, again, this is a planning item. We'll remain on action. Other questions at this time? Okay. Thank you. Next item.
Item number seven, Resolution 091-17 and application number NWCU3352, consider a request from Melissa Morris, applicant and landowner, for two conditional permits to allow an exotic animal, a serval, and to allow a kennel for no more than 15 cats and two dogs located at 12240 Moonlight Road.
Okay. Jeff?
Yes. Excuse me, just a moment, making sure my materials are loading up here. Okay. Sorry about that. Good morning. Jay Leipzig, Planning and Development Codes Director. The, first off, before I forget it, I did want to mention to you that this item will be presented next week by Jeff. Jeff Malott will be available to answer questions. Jeff has turned into our planning expert in dealing with serval cats and some of these issues. However, the, wanted to present this-
Congratulations, Jeff.
This item. The, this actually is for two conditional use permits, one for a kennel and one for a serval cat. And you can see in the vicinity map, the-
Well, as I understand, number six is for the, is not for the serval cat, so let's concentrate on that one.
Oh, I'm s-
Is the serval cat, right? Is it serval cat, right?
We're on number seven.
Excuse me.
We're on number seven.
Yes, this is the serval cat, okay. Are they combined, or are they separate?
They're separate items.
Okay. Thank, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, okay. I was correct. This is, yes, this deals with the serval cat. The applicant is Melissa Morris. The vicinity map shows it at Moonlight and 119th Street. Somewhat of an idea of the, of the aerial. As I, as I said, there's, there's, there's two conditional use, use permits that were requested, one for a kennel, one for the keeping of the serval cat. Staff recommended approval of the kennel and recommended denial for the serval cat. The zoning board recommended approval for both items, for both the serval cat and the kennel. The, gives you a little more kind of a detailed description of what, what it looks like. It's, it's well-screened. It's, it is, in terms of the issues with, with the kennel and those provisions, the zoning board staff are both comfortable with those. This gives you more of a detailed overview of what the particular cat house would look like and the kennel. It's a double sealed entry, so the cat is, is secure. The, the owner's also verified or will verify that the cat is fully declawed, with all four claws will be, will be declawed, which does remove the, the ability to scratch someone, but their natural tendency-
Do they still have teeth?
Still has teeth, yes. And I'm going to show you a picture. This is a, more of a detailed description of, of the kennel. This is a picture of the cat. And so essentially, what, what the applicant is proposing is the serval cat is, it's a, it's a species found in Africa. It's, they weigh approximately about 40 pounds. They will breed with domestic house cats, which creates savanic cats. And savanic cats are highly prized, highly sought-after creatures, and so the serval cat is purpose-based to breed with the domestic cats. We do have a, an additional statement from the Sheriff's Department concurring with staff's recommendation that, that even though the animal is fully declawed and will have a GPS collar, as stated in the stipulations, it's, it still has teeth and its natural tendency is to bite when cornered. Will that all stand for any questions you might have?
Well, hmm, okay. I, I think we probably need to have a lot more information in regards to the serval cat and the, the enclosure in which it would be maintained and the integrity of that enclosure. In my conversation with the sheriff about this issue, I think they would not look forward to trying to capture a serval cat that might happen to escape from, from the enclosure. He reminded me many years ago that there was a lion and a bear kept by a property owner in the county. The lion got out. He was asked to respond, and he said, "Really?" Or something to that effect.
Let's just delete it.
But, but the owner was able to recapture the lion. The story turns out okay. So I, I've got questions, but I think we need to have a, a more expansive explanation, and we'll look forward to the applicant's ideas, and also, Mr. Ashcraft.
And by next week, why 15 cats and two dogs?
It was just the, the amount that the, the applicant had proposed, 15.
Well, but why?
We can ask the applicant that.
I can tell you a few more details on the savanic cat. Obviously, when you breed the, the domestic cat with the, the serval cat, you, you get the savanic cats, and they're, they're graded by, they have an F1, which is a, which is a first-generation cat, and then they're bred down into a F4 or F5. So the F4 or F5 is a fairly docile cat, similar to a house cat, but the F1 is still fairly, not so much, yeah, it definitely, definitely has some wild tendencies. The other item I was going to mention is the, we do not have a building plan yet for the, for the, the cat enclosure and the, the kennel. However, the applicant has stated that it's, it is a state-of-the-art system they're using with a double entry to secure, to secure the animal. The serval cat, I believe, it, the approximate cost is about $10,000, and so they're a very expensive creature to, to house and maintain, and she has certainly made every effort to, to, to create a, a good-quality, state-of-the-art cat house for it, or containment area.
Closure.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to point out that the Big Six never fails to deliver on quirky and odd issues revolving around animals, and here we are. I had, I have a name and a phone number I'm looking for from Mr. Libzig for one gentleman who was in opposition to it, and I'll contact him this week and find out what his concerns were. I understand the sheriff's office also had some, at least concerns, if not reservations, and I'll follow up on that also.
All right. Well, this is a zoning item, so we'll remain on action. Mr. Ashcraft?
A follow-up, Mr. Brown. The question is, the notification of neighbors, I mean, where are we in that process?
We went through our standard notification process, notifying all property owners adjacent to the, to the parcel.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Well, again, we'll remain on action. Thank you very much. Next item.
Item number eight, application number NWPP/FP3353. Consider a request from CJ Garrett, applicant, and Robert W. Sullivan, trust landowner, for preliminary and final plat for three lots on approximately 40 acres zoned RUR, World District, in the vicinity of 99th Street and Waverly Road.
Thank you. Chair of this, this item, Jay Leipzig, Planning and Development Codes Director. This item is located in 99th Street and Waverly Road, just immediately south of the, the city of DeSoto. As you may recall, 99th Street is Collector Road. Waverly Road is a, is an arterial. So the, what you're looking at here is the plat, and I wanted to point out a couple of things to you. This, this item was, was recommended for denial by staff, but recommended for approval by the zoning board. And this, what is, what is problematic about this from staff's perspective is, is just the, the layout of the, of the plat, where you have Lot 1 here, Lot 2, and Lot 3. You have a, we call it a basically a straw, which connects to an 8-inch waterline off of Waverly Road. So it's a very unusually sized, peculiar plat that, that is problematic. There would be access points at, at Lot 2, and Lot, Lot 1, onto a collector, and also onto Lot 3, which is an arterial. Staff also has concerns about that as well. But I want to show you a, a, a better map. This, this shows you the, the location of the waterlines. As I said, there's an 8-inch main that runs north and south along Waverly. There's also a, a 1-1/2-inch waterline up 99th Street, and then there's a 6-inch main that is also part of Water 7 in the city of DeSoto. So, in the ideal situation, this particular plat would be to, to have three lots that, that access off of the Collector Street, which is 99th Street, and then have an 8-inch waterline that would be, that, that would connect onto the 8-inch off of Waverly to serve those lots. So it, it is somewhat peculiar in that, I can tell you, in 24 years of reviewing planning, I've never seen a plat that looks like this with that peculiar appendage to it. So I, I think it's one of those that should be reconsidered.
Jeff, let me ask you this. One of the issues is, is the location of, of the waterline, future waterlines. What, what communication has occurred with Water District?
We have communicated with Water District, and actually, they have proposed, they are, Water District proposed that, that straw appendage that serves Lot 2, because they, because of the expense imposed on the property owner to, to construct the waterline that grows, that would go along 99th Street and, and be able to provide access for that. So they were, the Water District actually proposed that. The city of DeSoto, when they reviewed it, they looked for essentially for zoning compatibility. The, the development itself, this Lewis Farms is a low-density residential, which is compatible with the other residential use up just immediately north of it. So they, basically, it was a, it's, it's compatible with surrounding developments and surrounding neighborhoods. It's just I, staff believes that the, something should be reconfigured or, or, or changed in order to provide the access.
Let me ask you this. What I'm trying, what I'm trying to get clarification on is, is if, if there's a requirement for additional waterlines because of this property activity, and those, those requirements are not met by the Water District, then how do they propose to construct those lines in the future?
That, that line-
Be asked, beared by the entire district rather than the property owner?
It could, it, that is one possibility to do that. The, the way that it was presented with the, the applicant would be, it would be borne by them, but there are additional opportunities to, to, to spread that cost to some of the other surrounding properties as the area develops.
Okay. Well, I'll follow Mr. Ashcraft's lead. I may need to meet with you offline, understand that relationship, so.
From time to time.
Any questions? All right, well, again, this is a zoning item. We'll remain on action. Next item.
Item number nine, resolution number 071-17. Consider adopting amendments to the Johnson County zoning and subdivision regulations concerning minor changes to clarify, refine, and update existing regulations, and consider adopting a position statement to guide county staff in the review and processing of matters pertaining to agriculture and agritourism.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Jeff, as I understand, there's, there's mainly a sentence or two that the Planning Commission declined to include in the recommendation that we had sent to them. Everything else was compatible, is that right?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that is correct. As you might recall, I'm, I'm going to look at the, the slide that's before you is the original-
Why don't we focus on that variation?
Position statement? Okay. Just, just to cut to it, there were, there were three items in the position statement. What the Planning Commission has proposed is to end it, this is, is to consolidate the three, three statements that were included in the position statement by saying, "If the use of the properties receive registration for agritourism in Kansas, then the county will consider that the use and its related events and activities are exempt from zoning regulation by the county," period. As you may recall, in the other position statement, there was some additional language concerning that if, if the use was, was agricultural, it would exempt from zoning, but still would be required to comply with, with public safety requirements, and looking at, at Slide 1. And so that, that is the change, and the thought, the discussion that, that the Planning Commission had is that the, the additional language is, is, it's part of our, our code anyway, and they thought that was redundant, essentially, and thought that just to, it's more concise, but just including the first item and just ending it after the, that it's exempt from the zoning regulations.
Well, appreciate the fact that they consider it to be redundant, but I, I don't think it hurts to have it spelled out in, in, in this notice so that everybody clearly understands upfront what's required, so. Any other questions, Mr. Ashcraft?
Mr. Chairman, on your point, I mean, is that all that is, is a concern about redundancy?
I believe so. Mr. Schaefer, were you able to attend that meeting?
No, we were.
You were out? Okay.
Kenny and I were both out of town.
All right. Well, we can verify that. Yes, Mr. Allen?
I'm just going to agree. I think when someone understands they have the approval, to have the agritourism approved, I think it needs to also state what the county's position is on the building codes, and then if you had some over-the-top event that, that we may have a question on that. So I, I think it needs to be stated with the policy.
Question for Jay. When someone applies for the agritourism exemption or, or the classification, does the state notify us as the county when that, when that permit or, or that approval's been given?
They, they have not done that in the past. They will in the future. We've had those discussions with-
Okay, good, yeah.
-about creating a, a database so that we know where these approved agritourism uses are.
So we can utilize that, then, to send a packet of information with some general guidelines in Johnson County about your agritourism permit? Okay, got you. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Well, again, this will remain on, on action. Thank you. We'll go back to the legislative platform, state legislative platform. Obviously, we've too optimistic on the agenda review, so before we conclude this, we'll come back into open session and extend the time on the executive session. Cindy.
Good morning, Commissioner. Cindy Green with County Manager's Office. What you have in your packet today is a request to approve the 2018 state legislative platform and also the Johnson County Government and Cities Joint 2018 legislative platform. We last week gave you a red-line copy of all the changes. This week in your packet is the actual platform that we have formatted, formatted and made to look nice and easier to read, but I am open to go through any parts that you would like to, if, and there was no changes made-
Let me, let's, let's do this. Are there, are there questions on any part of the proposed platform that need to be addressed at this time, or can be addressed next week? Jason, did you have-
Sorry, I didn't have a question. I was just going to make that suggestion that we address these next weeks since we're a little short on time.
Yeah, okay.
And maybe Ms. Green would visit with me before then. She and I had visited before. I, I think there were some changes, but I'm not quite sure that all the things we talked about have been touched and would want to get an understanding as to the thought process.
All right, I'd be happy to do so.
All right, well, this will remain on action. Cindy, thank you. Good for that short report. Are there any other items?
No, sir.
All right, that concludes the items on our agenda review for next week's business session. We are adjourned, and as I noted earlier, we continue in recess from the regular meeting following the Public Building Commission. We will reconvene and have to extend the time for the executive session. So, we are adjourned from agenda review. We'll come back for the PBC item, followed by the Executive Committee. Thank you all.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.